Good evening and welcome to a joint Planning and Development Subcommittee Town Council Meeting on Tuesday, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six P M. Here in the Veterans Room in the Town Hall in Southbridge. First order of business is call to order, second order of business is call call. Citizen Adam, uh, Councilor Adams is absent, Councilor Rivas is absent, Citizen Member Brindone is absent, uh, Citizen Member Larry Shell.
Yeah.
And John Daniel is here. I'm asking George Shanier, Councilor George Shanier, to, uh, become the third member.
Yes.
And therefore we have a quorum and can continue with the meeting. Uh, item number three, consider and accept the minutes of November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
And I'll second. Any questions, additions, anything? No? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstained?
Same.
Two oh one. Okay, item number four, review discuss the town manager's appointment of Arnold Bumfesong to the planning board for a term to end on six thirty, two thousand and twenty-six pending successful completion of state ethics. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council for confirmation.
So moved.
So, second?
Um, any discussion?
No.
Yes, manager?
So Arnold has expressed an interest in, um, joining this board. He's attended several planning board meetings. Uh, there was another candidate, Mr. Cody, William Cody, that also applied for that position in conversations. I did speak to David Pear as the Chair of the Board. He's, you know, um, at this point, and Arnold actually put in his application first. So I recommended Arnold because of, uh, you know, his desire and the...
Is that his name, Arnold?
Arnold.
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 Arnold, yes. Um, so at this time, I recommended him. Uh, if another position comes available, then we would revisit Mr. Cody, but, um, he has been, like I said, he has been attending the planning board meetings, in conversations with the Chair of the Planning Board. Uh, we got it both individuals, uh, because Arnold has been there for those meetings. He wished to recommend him as well.
Very good.
I, I first take this application, actually fired some of the ones that we've received in the past, so I think it'd be a good fit.
Okay. Any further comments, questions? All those in favor? Alvin or opposed? Three oh, unanimous, all present.
Can I bring the board up to full numbers?
Uh, for active, yes.
Item number five, review discuss the town manager's appointment of Ramon Arnold to the Trail Committee for a term to end on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six pending successful completion of state ethics. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council for confirmation.
So moved. Second?
Uh, Mr. Manager?
Uh, Ramon put it in. He had proved he served on the same committee. His pluggment ended in twenty-three. He's just seeking, um, to the same committee.
Very good.
He was a member of the Call Fire Department for ten years, uh, of the Fire Department, and champ, past Chairman of the Trails Committee, so, so this may have been an oversight that he didn't get reappointed. Just looking for a comment.
Very good. Committee, any questions? No? All those in favor? No one opposed? The unanimous are all present. Item number six, review discuss the town manager's appointment of Kevin Buxton to the Historical Commission for a term to end on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six pending successful completion of state ethics. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council for confirmation.
So moved.
I'll second that. Very good. Uh, Mr. Manager?
Uh, Kevin has expressed an interest to be in the Historical Commission. He serves on many commissions, um, and they're all open to that board, so.
Very good. Okay.
We don't get many people to apply to these boards, so it's hard for them to get quorums, correct, Peg?
Correct.
So that's why it would help to, for them to establish quorums for the other meetings and all that.
You convinced me.
All right. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? No one opposed? The unanimous are all present. Item number seven, review discuss the contract with Schoolhouse Construction Services, LLC to provide housing rehabilitation special services for the fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three C D B G Housing Rehab Program. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council for approval.
So moved. Second?
I'll, I'll defer this to Peg.
All right. This is Katie Yoder's item. As the C D B G Coordinator, I offered to bring it forward for her. Uh, it's a sixteen-month contract for ninety-five thousand dollars. So it might seem a little more expensive, but it is a longer-than-one-year contract. Um, they will serve as the owner's project manager for all the housing rehab, housing rehab projects that will happen. We anticipate around nine projects. We have four hundred fifty thousand dollars. We cannot spend more than fifty thousand dollars per house. We are, um, we are not doing nice-to-haves. We're doing need, need-to-have repairs done, um, where we find, where this housing rehab, where this housing rehab inspector, um, finds code violations. So people come in the door with, uh, an application. They state what they would like to have done, what they think they need to have done. The housing rehab specialist will come in, do a, an inspection to make sure there's no superseding health or safety code violations that need to be addressed. And sometimes the, the, what they may have wanted gets backseated for what really has to be done on the house to make it, um, you know, a safe home to live in. And, uh, the housing rehab specialist, after the inspections, works with us, um, to then bid out the work or, uh, quote out the work to local contractors. Once we've, um, once the, the work starts, then they sign off on all the work and the relationship of the, um, the money goes through the, um, the homeowner to the contractor. No prevailing wages are involved, which keeps the projects cheaper. It's a feel-good program that we haven't done since two thousand and fifteen.
Um, DeeDee?
Okay. If a homeowner's renting, can a renter, somebody who rents, whether it be their apartments, rents houses, rents whatever, could they also apply for this? Or is it just limited to the person living in the home?
It's, uh, it's limited to people who own their own homes or owner occupants and their apartments. So, uh, and if a renter wants to convince their landlord to go for this, they can, but they have to be eligible. So the, they, we have to make sure that the owner of the property is low-income and then that if there is more than one unit, uh, being addressed also, that they are also low-income.
Okay.
By law, the C D B G funds have to benefit low-moderate income residents.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Councilor Shanier?
This, this person's gonna do the inspections for the town?
Correct. Uh, it's, it's actually seen as a conflict of interest if we were to have, um, someone inspect and then advise on what work needs to be done, and then that work has to have permits pulled, right? Um, and so you can't, we, we have been advised that we can't use our own code enforcement officers or, um, building inspectors to, to inspect, to the initial inspections, then advise on the work, and then be, um, signing off on the permits for the work. So this keeps any conflict of interest out of the realm of the work.
It's just, to me, it seems like we're, we're, once this is done by this person, then our own building inspector is gonna go there and inspect the work, completed work.
Correct.
So it's like redundancy, and I feel that's kind of like a waste of money. Why couldn't we take that ninety-five thousand dollars, hire or supplement an employee of the town to do that same kind of work, but also utilize that person maybe somewhere else in inspections? And you, you get what I'm trying to say?
If I may, I think, just to paraphrase what I think, and I know what she said, was, we wouldn't wanna go in and inspect the property and say, this work has to be done, then direct, and then they get it, right? And then have them hire somebody, then us, then re-inspect it, saying, for the inspection permit fees and all that. So it's kind of like a non-biased person going in and saying, yeah, this has to go done, this is the work that needs to be done. You go through the permits and then we inspect it afterwards. I, I think that's...
You, you've nailed it. And also, you know, uh, Councilor Shanier's ideas are great. It would be, it would be, um, a benefit to the town if we could create a position like that, but unfortunately, the workload is actually so much that they probably wouldn't be able to do much more. Um, what we're hearing in a lot of other towns is that they're taking a lot longer to get these programs done because it's, there's so many steps involved in, in, in all of this, you know? Um, we're gonna try very hard to work aggressively to stay within the grant timeline and get the, the work done as quickly as possible, but I wouldn't wanna further jeopardize that by stretching them thinner.
So how many homes, again?
So if we have four hundred fifty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars per home, at most, nine. There is the opportunity to request a single waiver on, uh, one place, um, to the state if we feel that it's necessary. Um, however, it probably won't happen. Um, and again, these are not nice-to-haves. This is, we have so much substandard housing in the town, we really wanna just get to the health and safety issues first before we start worrying about, you know, the, the things that are the nice-to-haves.
If I may continue, is, uh, we haven't done this in how many years?
Since two thousand and fifteen.
So it was prior years, we did a lot of homes throughout the town, and we found multiple homes getting the same money multiple times. My concern is that I wanna be able to reach out to homes to, that really need the help, and I'm hoping that we can reach out to the low-to-moderate income in the minority community also. So I, I guess I'll jump on what, since Jasmine came in, is I would hope that this document, when it goes out, will be in multi-language, so we can reach those people.
Sure.
If I may, through you, unfortunately, we probably already have enough applications in the door if they're all eligible. Uh, the applications opened up, uh, maybe a month and a half ago. There had been, uh, previous announcements going out about how the housing rehab would be opening up. There had been people, um, you know, soliciting for applications right from the start. We've had a waiting list of people since last year that it's been started, so, um, there, there have been people tuned in waiting very eagerly. We try very hard to make sure everything is bilingual and to reach everybody. It's open to anyone in the town that's low-moderate income.
And who does the selection process?
It's a first-come, first-served complete application.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, uh, Katie's, uh, uh, very fair and diligent about it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm wondering, how many applications do we have at this point?
I don't know. I just know that we have more than nine, yes. And we don't know how eligible they are and how complete they are. And for every application that comes in the door thereafter, we would have them on a waitlist for future programs. So it's not to discourage people from applying. We think that, um, we probably will not apply in the next round of, of C D B G funds, which we're putting an application through in two months, because this grant and the next, this is the fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three, the next grant is fiscal year twenty-four, they're going to three-quarters of the time overlap, and that will, that will complicate things if we went for another housing rehab grant at the same time. Um, and so what we'll do is wait until the twenty-two twenty-three is completely done, and probably in the fiscal year twenty-five, if this is a popular program and everyone seems to think that this is the right direction to go again, we would, we would then ask for more funds.
Are we, we getting cut state funding on this, these projects, these AMOCs?
So this is not an earmark. This is a pass-through from HUD, uh, of, um, C D B G funds, so I don't think it's necessarily going to be affected by the, any kind of state budgeting.
Anyone else? I'd just like to say that I'm glad, uh, that we're doing something for the people in town. Uh, the C D B G funds are popular, and, uh, they've been used, uh, recently for infrastructure, and it's just nice to see that they have more than one purpose and are able to do something for the citizens in town as well. Uh, I'll grant you, it's nine homes out of seventeen thousand people that live in town, but, uh, nine homes is better than none. Uh, so I'm pleased to see that we're able to do that, so thank you. Go ahead.
Maybe perhaps maybe six thousand homes in town.
Six thousand homes in town? Okay.
Somewhere between six and seven.
Well, that's a good start.
Okay.
That's right.
Six thousand four hundred fourteen, just from single family to million.
There you go, yeah.
Only 'cause we're doing the curbside, so.
I'll get those numbers.
We're getting those numbers, so trying to drill them down.
Any further discussion? Very well, all those in favor?
I won't vote now that Jasmine's here.
Thank you. Anyone opposed? Three oh. Very good. Item number eight, thank you for filling in, Councilor.
Thank you.
Uh, number eight, review discuss applying for the two thousand and twenty-four Rebuilding America and Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Raise Discretionary Grant to reconstruct Hampton Street for seven point nine million and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council for approval.
So moved. Second?
Very good. Uh, Peg? Anything else?
So, everybody's familiar with the raise grant. I think we've talked about it many times.
Yeah.
Peg has been working very, very hard on getting this grant, application information together, and she's actually been sending a ton of, uh, correspondence to different, uh, representatives, congressmen, anybody that can write letters of support, um, so we, uh, probably request that you allow us to reapply, and hopefully we can get the funding this year based on the fact that we're so close last year.
So I see where it's not gonna cover the, the water and sewer, so at that time, we're gonna update everything while the road is all being ripped apart? We're not gonna fix the road and then rip it up again?
Um, if I may through you, Chair, the, uh, this, the next motion is to request seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, should we be awarded for that exact reason. And because, um, that, to us, is the ideal project, right? If you're, just as you said, if you're gonna rip up a road, if you can afford to, you know, do any repairs or needed work at that time, it only makes sense, right?
Now, whereabouts would this start? It said we got it.
So if we're awarded, we would probably find out in the fall. We'd probably start in the following construction season. So that would be in two thousand and twenty-five.
It wouldn't like interfere with East Main Street, that whole, would it be the same time? Would it be?
Uh, possibly, could be at the same time, yeah. I mean, it will keep us busy. You know, I always say, um, this is when the hard work begins. When we're lucky enough to get these awards, that's when the hard work begins. You know, is it, it, does that mean we don't go forward? Um, yeah, so we tried to time it, you know, so that we would do it, um, before Hamilton Street. We tried to time it, um, to do it before River Cranes, uh, after River Crane Street, and that timing is working out well, thankfully, because we're just about to go out to bid for River Crane Street. Heather Hamilton, Heather Blakely, back in her days, had said, in order to do Hamilton Street, you first need to do River Crane Street. And so we are still at least moving in the right sequence, but are we exact, you know, like, we're not, we're not exactly, um, on the exact years that we would have liked to have fallen because, you know, we have these other projects that weren't working on.
So we could conceivably be having River Street, Hamilton Street, and East Main Street done all at the same time?
No, River Crane Street, excuse me, if I may through you, Chair, yeah. So River Crane Street, uh, will be bid this spring for this summer. Um, uh, East Main Street, I will have to confer to, or will have to defer to the D P W about when they'll be ready to go forward with East Main Street. I can't speak to that. Um, and then Hamilton Street will hopefully be next year.
But you may, we...
It could be overlapping.
We may be overlapping, though, with Mill Street and the bridges there.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And then the tip project as well, so. There's gonna be a lot of projects within the next two years.
So, and then with the rail trail, that's gonna be going out for bid next in the spring?
That was supposed to have gone out to bid in the fall. We're, we just got the, the lease from Mast E O T at Christmas. It was my little Christmas present, and we're now begging them to please approve everything to be able to let us go out to bid. So hopefully, we're going out to bid this spring for us to start construction this spring.
It's gotta be a busy year.
Yes.
Um, so that being said, how, um, I know that we've talked about the grant a lot. How much information has, how much outreach has been done to the businesses on Hamilton Street in that area so that not only they know about it, but that they can also, um, support or, you know, kind of write letters in support of the project, and also so they're aware of, like, all of these construction projects coming to a head, you know, at around the same time?
Yeah. Um, so we've had a lot of communication with the River Crane and the Mill Street businesses, but we haven't necessarily had a lot of direct communication with the Hamilton Street businesses, um, except for, for instance, like, the, um, the old Stirbridge Coffee Roasters location, right? The, um, the McCarthy's there, obviously, they're, they're well-aware. Um, so that is a good suggestion if we wanted to do some P R and potentially ask for letters of support. If you wanted to suggest, from whom we ask? You know, do we ask for, um, you know, Trinity? Do we ask for, you know, I'm not sure.
Um, yeah, I see, you know, you know, the Latino businesses there, like the grocery stores, that they might be affected by the construction, 'cause there's already limited parking in those areas, so maybe just getting them aware, but, you know, obviously, they probably wanna support anything that advances or helps businesses in the future.
I think it's definitely a concern that you have, because I know when they did Elm Street, it killed business, could put them out of business when they redid Elm Street. That was the restaurant, that was at the Gary Martin Comedy Store. Uh, I forget the guy's name, Sagunda, and it killed them, put them out of business. Come close, put Gary Martin out of business. If it wasn't a corporation at the time, I think it would have done them. So I think we need to work hard to address those concerns of the people on Hamilton Street when, when, when that happens. I think we have to do traffic, uh, differently, so they're not affected or affected as little as possible, because they're small mom-and-pop businesses and, you know, you take a, a, say a whole summer project, you know? So I think while we're in that planning stage, we need to take that into consideration.
Yeah, so if I may, just to keep it in perspective, I guess, uh, so I should backtrack. It probably, Hamilton probably wouldn't be done until two thousand and twenty-seven because the first year would be design.
Right.
And so we are in such a high-level concept phase that these issues of how do we address the, the traffic and, you know, those will all be part of that, um, design stage, like you said, that we're not at yet. And I wouldn't wanna create any alarm when we haven't been awarded. I would wanna, I would definitely wanna, I would want, um, to get, get the support, and I would want people to be proud that, hey, we're trying to invest in your neighborhood, and this is all, all for the good, but I wouldn't wanna create a, any kind of alarm that this is going to, to hurt their business if we're not even in the, you know, until, until we know we're in the running, right? Uh, that would be my, that would be my strategy, personally.
Okay.
Jasmine wants to go back on that.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I totally agree. We don't wanna alarm the businesses, but I think, like, getting them on board from the beginning so that they can sort of see it as, in the long run, this is going to be better for all of those businesses, that we upgrade the, you know, the roads and that they will have, um, they see the light at the end of the tunnel, per se. But I think getting them on board at the beginning and getting letters of support, I think, would go a long way, where, you know, where it looks like a collaborative effort between the town and the businesses on that road, so I think it would be a great idea. And then in the, you know, later on, when the project begins, you know, they've already been part of it from the beginning, and that way, you know, those fears might be, uh, you know, kind of minim- minimized because they've, they've already been part of the process from the beginning.
Just a quick question. We have all these projects going on. Do we have an overseer? I don't know, is that a crazy question, or is that part of whatever the grant is? Is there an overseer?
We find a mix with the grants. You know, some of them, we, we are able to budget in the construction administration, construction oversight, some of them we are not, and so it's been a, it's been a mix. Um, for instance, um, like with the rail trail, we were going to try to use in-house construction oversight, I was just talking to Jack about this this morning. We were just, we were gonna try to use in-house construction oversight with Eric as the town planner, and so that's sort of, now we've got a curveball there, you know? Uh, so for each project, we're having to approach, how would that be addressed?
And if I may, you know, we are still continuing conversations with the Department of Public Works about how that department's gonna be made up to either hire an engineer that's on staff to oversee these projects, or some kind of oversight there, so we're working with D P W on that as well, through the budget process.
Thank you.
But oversight is the key thing, 'cause we've been sitting around for years about lack of oversight in certain projects, and we wanna just make sure, um, I think with the D P W director that we have now, there is a lot more oversight than there have been in the past, but definitely we have, when we look at all these projects, that's always a concern too, 'cause we have so many projects going on. Do we have the capacity to have the correct oversight? So that's something we're taking a look at.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm just glad that we're looking at a, an area of town that's been overlooked for a while. Um, we have a large employer down in that section of town as well, and, um, anything we can do to, uh, make life easier for them, to make it better for them, uh, because they're, they're good stewards to us, um, anything we can do to thank them, I think is important. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor? No one opposed? The unanimous are all present. Very good. Item number nine, review discuss the use of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds towards the reconstruction of Hamblin Street, should the town be awarded the two thousand and twenty-four Raise Discretionary Grant and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion?
So, Mr. Chairman, through you, uh, these funds were committed the last time when we applied, so we just recommitted them to this next application process, and it's just there, discussed before, and we're just...
So if we don't re, if we don't get the project, it goes back to the enterprise?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? No one opposed? The unanimous are all present. Item number ten, review discuss applying for the two thousand and twenty-four Mast Trails Grant for up to eighty thousand dollars with a matching grant for up to twenty thousand dollars from an account to be determined, and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council for approval.
So moved. Second?
So, through you, um, as you know, we have all these rail trails and trails, and Peg, uh, had gotten this grant application, and I'm kicking it up to council to see what your flavor is, but whether you want us to apply for this. We don't have a, a funding mechanism yet for the match grant. We certainly have capital stabilization fund money of up to twenty thousand, you know, all that is continued. I wanted to at least go to council so you give us some direction as to whether we do go for this. Um, as you're aware, Michelle started two weeks ago, Dean started today. We've had conversations about reconciliation, a lot of conversations today about our financial situation. Um, there are a lot of concerns as we still haven't closed out F Y twenty-three, trying to get F Y twenty-four going. We do have a meeting next week set up with that financial team, including the one that we hired, outsourced, to kind of get this to the table. So we certainly could airmark twenty thousand if we get the grant, go forward. I just need, I'm kicking it to the council, you give us direction on what your thoughts are on this. This would, I'll let Peg discuss what section of the rail that we're talking about. It's, uh, previously constructed rail, it would be, um, revitalization of some of the, the parts of that rail.
Okay.
Uh, we currently have a two-year Mast Trails Grant that's complementing the, the rail trail. That was for design and some construction oversight. Um, the, we're typically not allowed to apply for Mast Trails Grants within the same year. We already have one. Um, however, this project came up during the C D B G conversation around how do we spend the last of those extra funds? Do we spend it at the, the six-hundred-block playground? There were suggestions about spending it at the Heritage Trail. There were suggestions, suggestions about doing other things with it. And so when this came up, I thought, do we need to spend C D B G funds for the Heritage Trail, or are there other use, other, other buckets out there that we could go for? Unfortunately, this one does have the match, unlike C D B G. Um, so, talking to the Mast Trails people, they said they would allow us to apply because it's a different project than the existing grant we have. And so if we chose to apply, we could. Uh, I got a, an estimate from Ty and Bond for the work. The, um, improvements would be for widening, regrading, resurfacing the trail to be A D A compliant. It is already A D A, however, it's, I don't think it's functioning as an A D A trail right now. Uh, it would also appropriate the, uh, transitions to meet the existing elevated walkways, broad, Uh, it would also appropriate the transitions to meet the existing elevated walkways, board blocks, concrete ramps. The aggregate from the, from the parking area to the trail would all be, um, made the same. Uh, drainage improvements are probably the most important thing that needs to be done and that's what would really be engineered. And then there's, when we're doing those drainage improvements, then you would wanna be, um, you'd have to be doing all the permitting around it. So it, it's something you could do a, you could do a small fix, which we initially proposed for fifteen thousand dollars in-house through the DPW. However, we know that we're short-staffed and it's hard for us to be able to, to, um, find the time to do that work. The reason we're here is because of a lack of maintenance over the last ten years and that's not to fault anyone. It's typical of these trails that you just, it's a hard, uh, proposition to ask volunteers to come out and clean these trails to the, to the level they need. DPWs are often already strained. So this is why the Mast Trail Grant actually allows for a maintenance grant. Normally, when you go to, you go for these mon, these funds, they don't allow for maintenance or for operations, you know, year-to-year operations, but in this case, they do because they wanna see this ADA trail functioning.
Where is the ADA trail?
The Heritage Trail, down behind West Street School, connecting to Westville.
Okay. Councillor Shenyi?
You know, what concerns me about the Heritage Trail is it's advertised as an ADA facility and it, by far, it isn't. And what concerns me is somebody going there and then filing a complaint with the Disability Commission. It's in poor shape. Well, I was on Recreation Committee when we built that and it was all ADA compliant at the time and it was maintained by, uh, DPW. And then when, when maybe leadership at DPW changed, it was no longer taken care of on a regular basis. You have the, the decking that has picnic tables on that, you have a lip like this that no wheelchair can go over. And it concerns me with this grant or regardless of this grant, that if somebody goes before and files a complaint with the discrimination because it is an ADA compliant no longer, and it's, I, and it's an unsafe place. And, uh, that concerns me too, 'cause the police can't be everywhere. But I would come dock early morning, I would not let my wife or dominate or anything. You know, it's not a safe place. It's a homeless place to hang out. It borders the river. Uh, it's just, I mean, there's, there's, they camp out in the woods by Westville, so I think we need to try and get as much upkeep up there and maybe if there's some excess funds that cameras could be, I hate to say it, but cameras are a thing of life today to make a place safe.
So, if you'd like, I mean, we'll pursue it and we could, we have approximately, uh, last check was, um, approximately seven hundred thousand left in that capital stabilization account, according to Christine. So, I mean, twenty thousand, we could definitely take twenty thousand out of capital to match the grant.
Yeah.
You know? I think it's a great program. I just wanted to get some guidance from the council 'cause some previous conversations about, um, the fire station, in which I firmly believe we have to build a fire station, but we also have to balance everything else that we do in this town. So we got a little bit of...
Hey, it's a great place. I mean, it was utilized a lot. It's just gone and disrepair and people...
And it is used quite a bit. I mean, there are a lot of people that go on that trail.
You know?
So, that go on, from there to, to Westville. So it is a heavily used trail, so it needs some attention.
The school also uses it.
The school, I mean, so I, I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do. I just was looking for guidance.
Well, are you limited in the amount of money you can apply for?
We could apply for another, um, we could apply for a hundred thousand dollars from them, twenty-five from us, but I felt like if we're asking for funds from the town, you know, do we wanna keep it down to less than a hundred thousand dollars overall?
Can, can that money be used for the repairs of the tennis court? Have you been there?
I think that would be different.
And...
It's a trail, so I don't think...
That's exactly right. So these are Mast Trails, Mast Trails loves ADA trails and shared paths. They're already paying towards one shared path in town and now they get to do an ADA tra- trail for us. They love that.
Great.
Um, and we feel that the, with the tennis courts, that's something that should probably first be addressed through that open space and recreation plan. What are the priorities for the town so that, you know, rather than piecemealing together a maintenance schedule, it can be a comprehensive approach?
Well, the only reason I brought the tennis court is it's feeling. I don't know if we've been...
No, I, I've heard quite a bit.
And I'm just afraid that we're gonna get to the point, if we don't do something, it's gonna be a total loss.
Those, those are maintained by the school though, so the school, that is...
It was rec, no, it was Recreation.
The tennis court?
Yeah.
That's not school?
No, it was Recreation when I was on the committee, yeah. Uh, Mike was gonna talk to Pioffi just to go look.
Okay.
See if you could give him an idea of what it would mean to either, maybe they're not salvageable any longer because they're, they're washing away.
Okay. That, that would definitely be a spring project, though.
Oh, yeah. It's just, it's just that I didn't know if you could use some great money to fix it.
Yeah.